Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Was it real good? Why is it, because they're kind of like Velcroed on those plates, you know, that describe it or whatever?
I hear the Germans.
I'm surprised nobody's messed with any seventeen years old crabs in that neighborhood.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call them in order. It is Tuesday, May thirtieth, twenty-seventh teenth. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bored enough, boy.
Okay, and Chris will not be with us today. That's nice. Uh, Minister of Fortune, season five?
No.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Uh, Cocaine Communities Meeting Thursday morning. Cocaine Extension Meeting Thursday night. Eastside Business Association Meeting Friday. Wear purple week, all week. Where's your purple? He didn't have any on, John.
He's not on the team, though.
I'm not.
You are.
I got my purple on.
It's not purple, my friend.
That is purple. They gave it to us.
Okay. Is that it?
He's supposed to play nice.
Taze him, just taze him.
Well, we talked about doing that for a fundraiser too, but he's not gonna do it. I'm about to make him really mad.
Get Communities tomorrow. Saturday is Kid Fest, ten to two. Sunday, I leave for Harbor. Next Tuesday, I won't be here, but it is the Sheriff's Barbecue. So everybody, everybody's got their tickets, right?
When is it?
Next Tuesday.
Four to seven.
I don't know, I might have to buy some purple or something. I don't know if I can afford tickets.
I need to buy some purple.
Okay, appointments by commission, three appointments of members of Care Lead Committee.
There is three positions open on the Care Lead. I've asked them to renew. Sorry, Larry just this morning. Larry Bishop's term is going to be up. And Michael Couttis' term is gonna be up. And then Chelsea, as the secretary type on this committee, her term is gonna be up. So I'm asking you to extend those three people's terms.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Presentation from invited guest, Rhonda.
You are second on the list.
Yes. If you would use one of the microphones.
Yeah, it doesn't amplify us, just for recording.
Good morning.
Morning, Rhonda.
Um, first, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the problems we have out on Tanner Bridge Road and Tara entrance. Because I, I represent the chem school. And we have about fifty VIPs out there every day who attend. And it's a dangerous situation. So I just first want to thank you for recognizing that. And I understand there's some money, safety improvement money going to happen. And all of this is happening very quickly, I guess. And then again, it may not. I don't know. What is the status here? I know what...
I think we've asked CMTS to do...
Channel seventeen has run that whole thing last week about, or two weeks ago.
We've been looking at Tanner Bridge Road, not just Tara, but several locations for safety improvements since the passage of the half cent sales tax.
Yes.
Okay, Tara is identified as our first priority.
And then I understand there's supposed to be some lifting of the flood area further out. So there's two areas?
There's five areas. Tara is priority number one. The other four, we'll kind of, we'll look at them and kind of make a determination as we move through the process. Funding wise, we do have money appropriated. Actually, we had to do a little budget transfer because we originally didn't have it budgeted for this year. We were looking at it for next year. But with Tara kind of, you know, coming to the forefront a little more, we wanted to get moving on the whole project. So we have money budgeted for design. Okay, beyond that, the County Commission, if we do decide to go forward with the project, would have to allow for another budget transfer to do construction.
Okay. Well, from my situation, you know, as a, as a school director and dealing with these little humans we have every day and their families and the, you know, two hundred trips a day coming in and out of there, it's a, it's a definite priority for, for me. And just a few weeks ago, we went on a field trip and pulled a bus out of there and almost got broadsided with a busload of children and, you know, ten families. And, or mothers, I guess, you know. And so it was, it was scary. And that's not just the problem there. Because emergency situations arise. And, you know, domestic violence issues are on the rise. And as a school director, I have to look at a lot of things. And, and access, changing the entrance is one thing. But, you know, that doesn't deal with flooding, you know, and accessing the school that way. If, if you guys in the future want to shut down the bridge, like you have in the past three months, and people have to go eleven miles around to get to us, you know, that doesn't really, it's not conducive to emergency situations, you know, that have to be dealt with. Some, you know, that's fifteen minutes out of the way, you know, for us to get an emergency dealt with at our school. So, you know, just putting a Band-Aid on raising the level and lowering this hill and raising this hill doesn't deal with the future of what we're doing there, you know. And I feel like I want you guys to take a look. I've talked to Dave Sylvester, and, you know, we've gone around and around about this access to Route B. But, you know, for, for safety reasons, you know, and emergency response situations, you know, it, I don't know, it, well, and financially, it would be, instead of doing this and this, and, you know, you're still gonna have to shut down Tanner Bridge when you replace the bridge at some point. You know, that bridge is gonna have to be dealt with, you know. So how are you gonna, you know, I feel like just doing Tanner Bridge might deal with some immediate problems. But, you know, long-term, it's not. You know. And I'm not dealing with a load of blueberries I can just send back if they're moldy. You know, I have, I have children to deal with here. And I have to look futuristically for them, too, you know. And so when you do look at some of that, why, why can't we go out to Route B? I mean, I, I don't know. It's all the same money. I mean, it's state money, it's county money.
Yeah, if you're talking to Dave Sylvester, that's MoDOT.
Right.
At one point, they did have an access to it, but then that disappeared.
Well, I still have the letter. But at the same time, you know, a lot has changed.
Yeah, I don't know if that letter means anything after, that's probably been twelve and fifteen years ago when she had it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, probably.
So I don't know if they'll still do it or not. I haven't really talked to...
I think even now would be more imperative because of, of the success of, of the school and the, you know, how it's thriving and what we're doing there. I, I feel like we need to look into some other situations. I mean, if we're gonna put a Band-Aid on this, and a Band-Aid on that, and a Band-Aid on that, and then have to tear out the bridge and rebuild that, and straighten out this so that it can accommodate that.
Turn out the bridge doesn't really affect anything, though. Because you can still got, you got ingress, egress, different ways. So even if the bridge is closed down like it was previously when we just, we did the redecking on it or...
Well, if the, if the bridge shuts down, you know, you have to go eleven miles out to Wardsville and come around that way.
They're doing work on Liberty and Shamrock, and they've shut that down. They had to go a longer way around. It's, I mean, it's an inconvenience for a little while. But, I mean, your also road is a private road. That's kind of where the problem is. We can't really do anything with it. And we talked about the NID part.
I get that. But you're either gonna have to take it off at Tanner Bridge side, or...
We can't. It's not our road.
Right.
So, I mean, that's kind of where our hands are tied there.
Well, somebody has to. Right. And, and see, I mean, from my understanding with you, Jeff, the Carenders are not willing to, to allow that. I mean, I get hit almost every day trying to pick up my mail.
They don't, I mean, they don't have to give us any land for right of way on Tanner Bridge. We did talk with the owner, and she didn't feel inclined at this time to sell us any land or give us any. So we're looking at other options to, trying to lower the knoll, I guess, to where you can have better visibility or line of sight when you're coming out there, just to make it safer. I mean, as simple as it may sound, putting a convex mirror up there, to me, will solve a lot of stuff. They've got that around Giggins Creek Road. At least makes it safe.
Not with the amount of traffic we have there. I mean, it's, it, the volume is high.
Yeah, but you can see.
It's, it's a very high volume of traffic.
But you can see. I mean, right now, it is, it's a blind spot there.
Right.
So if you put that mirror up there, you can see over top of the hill.
Jeff, yeah, you hear what I'm saying. I've got fifty children. A mirror isn't gonna cut it. You know, a few years ago, you put a T there so that it would indicate there would be an intersection there. But that hasn't really done much either, you know, other than just maybe notify the people who look at the site.
I mean, even having patrol out there slowing them down doesn't always help either.
Anyway, I just, I just hope that you're looking at the big, big picture of this and not trying to put a Band-Aid here and a Band-Aid there, you know. I, I, I hope you can look futuristically. And if you're going out for bids, or you can work with MoDOT, it would be a, a, a more viable solution, I feel like, to go that way. Because you're gonna have to shut down traffic, you know. Even if you do all of this, everything's gonna have to shut down anyway, you know. And if, if you could be working on a different access that would alleviate, you know, all these other emergency situations and, you know, the hills we deal with and, and cutting down this and doing all of that, you know.
I'd be glad to talk to MoDOT and see if they let you do it. I'm not making a process on that. But here's the deal. You have to get your also's home association on board. You all have to bring that road up to standard first.
I got it. I get that.
So even if they would let you have an ingress, egress off of one seventy-nine, are you gonna be able to get everybody on board to do that? Because what was the price tag on that last time?
Well, I don't care if everybody's on board or not. I'd be willing, you know, I'm, I'm, for the school's sake, it'd be a whole lot cheaper for me to blacktop this from Route B up to the school than it would be all the hills and, yeah, dells and valleys out there to get to it right now. I mean, that's not a safe situation in the winter either, you know.
Twelve, fifteen years ago was a whole lot different than it is now. Twelve, fifteen years ago was a whole lot different than it is now.
A lot has changed, Jeff. That's what I'm saying. We need to look futuristically about this.
Talk to your neighbor. I know, I've talked to Pat McCutcheon, who lives there, who's a, a sergeant with the JCPD. And, you know, talk, talk to your neighbors.
Well, he doesn't want it, but he's like, hey, he just wants it safer.
Well, no, but he, yeah, so, I mean, you know, creating a, an ID is really about the only way we could, could do anything to the road itself. I think...
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do anything to the road. I'm not here today about that.
Yeah, we have put you, I mean, we have, we have moved you to the forefront. So...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, this doesn't have anything to do with Tara Road. This has to do with the safety issue. It has to do with emergency situations and just, in general, access to the school, you know, and to the neighborhood. And for flooding issues, for emergency services, for, for a number, the traffic, the volume of traffic, just a number of, there are all those reasons. And not just, you know, it's not about Tara Road. It's about safety. Yeah.
But that's what we're looking at.
Okay. So I hope you can, instead of pursuing your, all of these, these things, I want you to also look at that.
I guess I don't know what you're wanting us to look at.
I want you to look at, at, at the big picture of, of how we're going to...
I don't disagree at all that if it went through to one seventy-nine, that'd be great for you all, because you know I live there. So I was flooded in. I had to walk through the woods to get to one seventy-nine, get to the football practice and games.
Right. But, but the people on your end would still continue to, to, yeah, be able to access Tanner Bridge that way. But, yeah, put up a mirror there. Go ahead.
But if you want to talk the safety part, I mean, we're doing as much as we can with that right now. I think Eric's moved it to the forefront, and he's done a good job of, let's prioritize it and do something.
Oh, no question about it. I'm, that's what I said. I'm happy you guys are addressing the safety issues that are, are happening right now. But I just want you to look at all of it.
Can you send me a copy of your letter from MoDOT? And I'll see how much water it still holds? Or if it's just worth the papers written on right now?
Yeah. And, and Larry, you probably know more about that than, than anybody.
Yeah, the water at that time was, it had to be, it had to be completed from Tanner Bridge all the way to Route B.
It has to be done without some help.
For that to happen. That was the stipulation in the letter then. But again, like Jeff...
But again, in lieu of all these other reasons, you know...
It'd still be cheaper for us to do the, the safety improvements and for that, too.
You think?
Yeah.
We need to do that anyway. I mean, we do need to make improvements on Tanner Bridge Road for everybody coming in. There's a lot of traffic on Route B that uses it as a bypass, and they'll be using it a lot more now that the Route B work is being done. So regardless of what happens on Tara Road, we still need to make all these improvements. So, I mean, it's an added benefit if it were to happen. But, you know, I think where you're going, getting at is, instead of spending the money on this, the county should make an investment on just Tara Road, or maybe the intersection off of Route B, or whatever.
Oh, something.
Our position is, and I think the Commission would, would agree, that we need to focus on Tara Road. That's our, I mean, we own and maintain Tara Road, and that's what we have to do.
Well, I guess what I'm saying then is, you know, when you guys do all of this, is that gonna shut down access to the school?
When we go through...
We'd make provisions, Ron, and no matter what, there'd always be access. It may be rough. But it, yeah. Yeah, that's the same when we do an upgrade and a subdivision.
Right.
You know, we, we keep access for the, the property owners, where they can get in and out. But, you know, there's, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be painful for a while until we get it done, yes.
We take a road for mass...
Well, would there, would it be feasible to, we are shut down in July to mid-August. Would that be a window where we could do this without disruption?
We won't be ready at that time. Yeah. They just did the survey and stuff here recently, I think a couple of weeks ago. So it'd be a while yet.
They're still, they gotta finish the survey up this week to get it designed. And, you know, we have statute requirements for bidding. It takes at least a month to bid.
Okay, we're a month out. Okay. So that's what I'm saying. So...
Well, it's, it's a survey. It, it's gonna take a while just designing it. To get the front, there's no way we can get it done in July and August.
This year?
No, it's not gonna happen.
But if you want us to try to do the work in July, August, to work around the school schedule?
Well, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just saying that would be an ideal time.
We would maintain access at all times on Tanner Bridge Road for local traffic. So actually, during construction might be your best time, if it's, if school's in session, because you're not gonna have all of the, the pass-through traffic. They would do, use the detour.
Alternative route.
Yeah. So it might be to your advantage to do it. I, I know it's gonna be a little rough, but you're not gonna have all the traffic issues that you, you currently have.
It's not much rougher than the road is down past your also's. It gets pretty rough down there.
I'm deaf, Jeff. You're gonna have to...
So it won't be much rougher than the road is down there by yours already sometime?
Oh, I tell ya, it's, it's a fortune to keep it maintained. Yeah.
A lot better than it was, though. It's wider and it's a little safer, so.
Rhonda, we totally get where you're coming from. Totally, we do. And, and we're, we wanna improve Tanner Bridge Road for everybody. Your, your school does benefit from that. But we, we're totally on, on your side with the safety aspect.
I know. And I appreciate that. So, okay. Well, thank you for listening to me today. And thanks for dealing with this, because it is important.
Thanks, Rhonda. Ms. Rhonda.
Thanks.
Okay.
Bye.
Bits and contracts, signing of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen DWI Highway Safety Grant Award Contract.
We have two contracts from the State of Mary. One's for four thousand, one's for thirty-two hundred. These are just for overtime, one's for DWI, the other one's for hazards moving violation. This is down lower than what we did last year.
Jerry, Sam, Jill. Okay. Yeah, they wanted to ask to hear, so I was hoping you'd seen them already. So it's what we do every year, just less this year. So...
Yes, it's less than you're good for. You do it every year.
Okay. I'm fine with them. You good?
I'm good.
All right. I'm making motion that we sign the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen DWI, DWI Highway Safety Grant and the HMV Highway Grant.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any unfinished business? Accounts payable review?
I don't have any accounts payable. Just tell me.
Nope. Okay, good. Because I hadn't opened that up to review.
Signing of surplus title.
This is a sheriff's vehicle. It's a two thousand and eleven Dodge Charger. It's here. It's just signing this title, so you can put it to auction, I guess?
Yes.
There's your car. The lights and everything.
Is it red?
Uh, yeah, sure.
This one I'm replacing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm making motion. We sign the title for surplus.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of document for donation of one old stretcher to Osage EMS.
At your request, we have been advertising the surplus stretchers. And Osage took us up on one. It's the same document that we signed for the clients.
Okay.
Jill.
All right. Making motion, we sign the document for donation of one of the old stretchers to Osage EMS.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Chris is not here today. We've got the authorization to proceed with tablet purchase to complete Mobile CAD implementation. And Chris would like to be present.
When do you have to do these, Jerry? Yesterday, or...
Yeah.
Can we get with Chris, see if we can meet later this week, maybe?
That's what I, that's what I...
I mean, he'll be around next Tuesday, but Sam's gone. So I don't know, can, if it can wait two weeks, or...
If we can do it later this week, that'd be best.
What, say by next week?
If we can do it sometime this week.
This week.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see if Chris can...
These don't have to go through the bid process once.
Well, these are, these are corporate here.
Oh, oh, never mind. It's corporate here.
Where were we at on the, I guess, refresh my memory on that. Is this the price we were at when we first talked about these? The, I guess we had the CAD system, we had some issues with it, then y'all got them to redo the pricing on it, and now we need the tablets to finish up.
Are you looking at this?
So, so, this is complicated. So we actually, this was part of the AV, the original AVL package, the Mobile CAD was. But as you'll recall, the mid-mode GIS didn't work. We used the Mobile CAD money, or I'm sorry, the AVL money, because it was related to pay the zirker there reduced price to do the, the mapping and all that stuff. So this is essentially the amount that we're gonna be over budget for having to do that. So this is the, this is the add-on for the, to end the entire project for the AVL. Kevin can explain the, the, the work that he and Brian did, but that's the budget side of it.
You wanna just wait till this week, or you want, I can tell you all about it, or I can show you, or we can wait till Chris is back?
Probably just wait till Chris is back.
Probably wait for Chris and...
When we talked about having to do the tablets, this was the, that was the pricing that we were talking about back then. So nothing's changed.
Yeah, the, the thing that's changing is going back to twenty thirteen, whenever we bought the Toughbooks, those laptops and all the ambulances, their warranty is up in twenty eighteen. And by doing this project, you'll see a little bit of an increase, but that's still utilizing the Toughbooks for another couple of years, rather than surplusing them. We're able to get a little bit more out of them. I'm assuming you're looking at the quote, or you're looking at the quote yet?
Yeah.
So...
You're at, what was it, thirty-five thousand? Mine keeps coming in and out. I don't know. I hit the wrong button somewhere.
Fifty-six, two forty-two, forty-three is the correct quote.
Okay, fifty-six.
Yeah. And then what that will allow is devices in every ambulance and utilizing the current Toughbooks for the CAD. But if we do that, that takes away from our patient care reporting devices. And that's essentially what these would do. Because right now, if we have the laptops that we own now, and we take them out of the dock, we lose them in the CAD system. So it kind of defeats the purpose of having an AVL. Plus, they're to end of life anyway. So if we're able to lock them in the dock, we can get a couple more years out of them. And these would essentially replace them, but we'd still be using them for CAD. I've worked through about eight different scenarios, and actually, the best one is actually the lowest cost. And that's at fifty-six, two forty-two quote that you had.
All right. Well...
The, down at the bottom, the next big ticket piece on the quote, the line to credit points, that would allow us to use one source of data to feed both devices in the truck. Otherwise, you're paying another seven hundred dollars a month, and that would eliminate that. So it'd kind of pay for itself in thirteen, fourteen months.
Okay. Well, we'll get with Chris and see if we can meet again this week sometime, I guess, and see what questions he's got on that.
Okay.
Got one more question, though. I mean, we can go ahead and implement it, the CAD and AVL and everything. We just, it's gonna be easier with the new tablets. And they'll be able to keep all the information even whenever you undock them.
Yeah, the only problem is, we got the AVL piece, and rather than doing the black box feature in the ambulance, which is probably a double those price.
It's about three or four thousand.
Yeah. This is actually a lower cost to, to, to do. But if we're able to leave the Toughbooks that we have now locked in the dock, that would accomplish what we need to accomplish. But we can't do that if we're using that laptop for AVL and our reporting, because we have to have the laptop come off the dock to do our reporting after the patient sign. So every time that comes off, we lose the, the CAD functionality of it.
Okay.
So it's, it's a lower cost by doing it this way, but it's utilizing the equipment that we already have.
All right. I won't get too far in the weeds.
The most important thing is, if we take that Toughbook out of the dock, we've lost the ambulance and the CAD.
Yeah.
It doesn't exist as far as the CAD's concerned.
Okay.
That's a huge problem.
Yeah, I think I understand what's going on with it. Won't get too far down in the weeds till Chris is back and figure that out. If we can get that later this week.
Let's know.
Yeah, well...
If I could, I might call Kevin, too, to find out exactly where we are in the capital and the purchase orders that are still out there. So it gives you guys a better picture of where we are in the capital. So, I don't know, compared to what we budgeted, what fits in what category we're in.
Okay.
Yeah. I think what got budgeted got jacked up because it wasn't all included in what they were doing and, and the GIS. And they changed some stuff on it. But it's really not gonna be anything unless we finish it up here.
Yeah. Next, we have the requests for the county's capital improvement sales tax for a quarter of deeds. And again, Chris asked if we, he would like to be here when we discuss that. So maybe if we can set up a, a meeting for later this week, then we'll, we'll discuss that at the same time. Is it okay with Houston?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll try to do it before Tuesday. Because I imagine you want to be here, too, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll try to do it this week. I'm leaving Sunday. So...
Please tell me what day is available on all tests.
Any, if he was...
Not this week.
I thought you wanted to get it this week.
I didn't say I wanted to.
Oh, they want to.
Yeah.
If Chris could do it early in the morning, or if he could do it, do it, you know, anytime, whatever works for Chris, we'll make it work.
I'm not promising that. We got the Honor Flight go after him Friday, so I won't be around. So, see what Chris has available. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
If we can do it like at six in the morning sometime, it'd be great.
I'm here. I'm here.
I'm not joking either.
I'm not either.
Lindsay and I don't know. Get to go home early. All right.
The big thing is, we're moving in here, so it's gonna have to be over at the law enforcement center or somewhere else, so we're at their mercy or somebody's mercy.
I want for the tablets.
You serve us breakfast over there?
It won't be, yeah, you don't want the breakfast also. Yeah, but I don't think it'd be a problem.
We're not, we're not at his mercy by no means.
We're at somebody's.
Well, at six AM.
We got, we got a, we got a couple of rooms over at Emergency Services Building. We got plenty of places we can use, so. We got, we can go to Public Works and do, we never been one out there, have we? I bet they'd love to have us.
They're, they're there at six.
Let's just move on.
So I'm not looking so bad now.
Thinking about next April when there's a Good Friday or something, they'll, they'll send us a map. I don't know if you want us coming out there that much so, do you? At least you're honest. Wipe our feet.
We got spots if you need it, but there you go.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, we got plenty of places we can do it, so we'll make it work. If Chris can do it a certain time, we can find a place to do it.
Yeah. We have any other business? Old business?
No.
There was one other thing that got added to the agenda and that was, are you done? Did you think you were done?
Mm-hmm. That's all I got on either.
Was the Zerker documents or something?
Zerker contract.
That was added Friday.
Did we do that under old business?
I think we'll do it under old business. Because we've this, we've gone through this thing so many times.
Well, that wasn't within the twenty-four hours to be able to add to the agenda. That's the problem.
I think that was actually already signed. That was a configuration agreement. I think it's, it's over.
Maybe. I was here last week.
Okay.
I'll have to look and see.
Okay.
Well, if it's something else, we can.
Okay.
I think this was signed last week. Is it in the folders?
It was. There was documentation. There was implementation documents and that's what was signed last week.
It was the final configuration.
Okay.
There's, there's another one that's pending, but I haven't, we haven't looked over it yet, so.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, oh, another upcoming event on the seventh. I'm trying to find a sitter for John. I meant to help him so we can get him hypnotized next Wednesday. But if you're not doing anything Wednesday, we got the hypnotist comedian down at Avenue HQ. And it's fundraiser for Relay for Life for the People in Purple or Power in Purple.
Power in Purple, yes, not People in Purple.
That's a big purple shirt.
Are we gonna hypnotize you too?
If we sell it out, I'll do it. I don't care. I won't say anything. If I'm hypnotized, I won't say when I'm not hypnotized, so.
That would be interesting.
To say the least. There you go.
Okay, I have.
You want ten tickets sent for your story?
Have mail from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Mr. Jeffrey Mode, M&amp;W Halling. Uh, they've approved his application. This was sent to me and Senator Kehoe, Representative Bernskeiter, Lindsey Henry, Midwest Environmental Consultants.
They got that satellite and that satellite dump site, so.
Yeah, so.
Transport station, so they'll be able to.
Yeah, so.
Take bigger truckloads instead of taking small truckloads. Where are they dumping it at? Are they going?
Uh, they were going up to Columbia. I don't know if they still are.
Okay, because I know it wasn't anywhere close and each time one of the small trucks gets full, so they're gonna dump them and then be able to take them up there in bigger truckloads.
Anything else?
Nope, don't think so. Motion to stand recess until four thirty.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.